Welcome to all, so excited to see you today. We've got people from all over joining us for this great special session of Empowering Perspectives. I am Laura Sheehan and so excited to see you all here today. And in a minute, I will introduce our guest Karen Summers. Would love to take a couple of minutes to say hello to all of you all. And for those of you who are new to Empowering Perspectives, wanted to tell you a little bit about the group. It is a free monthly speaker series which began in Hanoi in 2017. And has since moved to other cities in Asia. And then with COVID, of course, we got to move online. So here we are, this is our beginning of the third or fourth session that we've had online. It's been a lot of fun so far. If you guys wouldn't mind typing into the chat box, or since we have so far a little bit of a small group, you can unmute yourself and say hello and let me know where you're calling in from so that we can get an idea of where everybody is. I see Sarah who is here from Tokyo, hello.
Hi. Hi, I'm Nakazi and I'm from Canada, from Ontario, Canada.
Oh, so am I. Thank you so much for joining us. Look at your haircut. Oh, and there you go.
Hi.
Hello, which city are you from?
Naggarong Lake.
Beautiful, beautiful, I'm from London and Toronto. But now I'm a Los Angelino.
Okay, okay.
Los Angelino. Fellow Canadians.
It is a thing.
Yeah. Thank you so much for saying hi. Anybody else willing to jump on and give a greeting?
Yeah, I'm Sarah from Australia but in Tokyo, nice to meet you all.
Great to meet you, thank you so much for coming today Sarah. And Sarah has volunteered to be our first person to get an online immediate Zoom makeover.
Wow, wow, good on you.
Yes.
Barry?
It'll be good, anybody else want to say hello? I see someone raising their hand, Barbara.
Yeah, I'm Barbara, I also live in Tokyo, Japan, and I'm originally from Germany.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you for the opportunity today.
Glad to have you. I see Puyan, she's our speaker from last month, great to have her today, hi.
Hi Laura, hi everyone, this is Puyan, originally from Malaysia, left in England before moving to Tokyo.
Incredible. And Sophie is joining. We've got Tiffany coming in, this is fantastic. Anybody else want to say hello to the group? And just tell us what your name and where you're calling in from, yes Jill?
Hi, I'm Jill Kashiwagi, I'm from the US but we're living in Tokyo now.
Great, how long have you been here?
Since August.
Okay.
So, not quite a year.
Yeah. Anybody else want to say hi? Lisa, yes?
Hi, I'm Lisa, I'm from Peru, I live in Vietnam, in Hanoi.
Great, how long have you been in Hanoi?
For three years.
Okay, so we did overlap a little bit. I was there 2016 to 2018.
Yeah, I arrived in, yeah, 2017.
Great, were you able to attend any of the Empowering Perspectives meetings in person before?
Yeah, I did, I did, yeah.
Hopefully they'll start up there again soon.
Yeah, I'm waiting for that.
I hope so too. Oh, and there is Belinda, our fearless leader in Hanoi.
Yay, how are you?
Great, great to see you here today.
Good to see everybody, hi.
Well, as we continue on, just as a matter of admin, we'll keep everybody muted while Karen and I are going back and forth with the initial little bit here. But please feel free to unmute yourself to ask questions, or if you would rather type questions into the chat box, you're more than welcome to do that. We are also going to have hopefully three people, maybe more, have immediate Zoom makeovers with Karen on this call. I know, Sarah is one who has volunteered already, so think if you are willing to step up, Karen's gonna do a little makeover on me, you'll see in a couple of minutes. And then she's gonna show us too, through her camera, how things can change pretty quickly. So if we have a couple of other people that want to see how they can have their background and setting and lighting changed really quickly. Oh, we've got Nakazi, am I saying that right? She is, okay, we've got two, so Sarah and Nakazi.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, without further ado, if you guys can all put your microphones on mute, and Puyan is also volunteering. Perfect, we've got three, and if we have time for more, we are going to, because that's gonna be, I think, the super fun part of this whole exercise, is going through and seeing how we can make immediate changes so that we have the best possible presentation on all of these amazing Zoom and video platforms that we are on. Alright, so everybody go ahead and mute your microphones. Oh, and I need to of course remind you that this session is being recorded. And so if you would like to protect your image and not have it be on the recording, please go ahead and turn your video off. Of course, I would prefer to see your lovely faces, but totally up to you and wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was happening so that people who can't attend today are able to see the recording and benefit as much as all of us from being here today. Okay, so everybody's on mute and we are going to meet my friend Karen Summers, who is based out of Los Angeles. She is an award-winning filmmaker and photographer who has decades of experience putting things on film, clients like, and let me just read off some of these amazing clients, Disney, NBC, Universal Studios, PBS, Netflix, Showtime, those are just a few. So Karen is here today. I would say welcome, thank you so much for joining us today.
I'm getting hot just thinking about that amount of work, good lord, yeah.
Well, and Karen, when we've been talking about this, it was, this was actually Karen's beautiful idea to have this call. Because here we are, and the way that she described it to me, we are here now, in this great frame. And all of us need to think of ourselves as basically our filmmakers and photographers. So how in the world, and why, well, so let me start it off, I said, why is that even important? Why do we need to be worried about what we're looking at in this film? I mean, here I am, I'm at home, I could be wearing just my underwear, why not be wearing just my underwear?
Actually, I don't think any of us are wearing any underwear during COVID, is my best guess, yeah, yeah. That's everyone's commando at this point, as far as I'm concerned. Full disclosure, I've got a little bit of a potty mouth, so please bear with me, everybody, yeah.
So what, tell us, why is it important for us to be thinking about what is in this frame, as you so beautifully described it?
Well, you know, we're at a time and a place where, you know, we've already had a lot of social media mavens exploring just this space. You know, all the influencers that have been propagating on YouTube and, well, everywhere really. And now suddenly, we are all social media influencers, whether we like it or not. And like a picture, like a film, what your audience or the people that you're having a meeting with see is this. I mean, that's it, that's all they get to see. So, one of the things that, you know, we look at in film is when we choose our frames, we're very specific about what goes into the frame. And what is it that the character, what's the story that we're talking about? What does the character look like? How are they presenting themselves within the context of story? How else, in the background, you know, what's the set deck? What does that say in terms of the story, the character? It all informs all of that. So, you know, when Laura, everybody, when Laura and I are friends and we were talking about the challenges of this for everybody, and I went through my own curve, absolutely, I'm used to being behind the camera, directing, I do broadcast television, I'm also a working photographer, I do a lot of portrait work for movies and film as well. So I'm used to lighting other people. And so I had my own challenge trying to do it for myself now. And it's a curve, it's tough to look at yourself as, not as a product, but as a story. How do you want to communicate who you are in the best possible sense when you're within the four frames of Zoom now? And to me, it's about how can you bring the attention really to your face? Because it's, as they say, the eyes are the window of the soul. So if you want to most effectively communicate, whether that's in a meeting or in a pitch, or to your family, whoever that is, why not allow them to really see you? And see you in a way that really communicates what's going on with you in that moment.
That's so interesting too, because we had a couple of people send comments as they were RSVPing. And one person wrote in, and I really hadn't thought about this before, but she said that she tries to dress up and do herself completely for every meeting that she's attending. Because to her, it is not just about attending in a certain way, but it's also about showing respect to the other people that are there or who are putting on the meeting. So it's just as if you are attending a meeting in person, except that it is of course not. And it's a hard mental gap, I guess, to bridge.
Well, I think, I think that plays into human psychology so much, you know, we all know that we feel our best when we've taken a little bit of time to zhuzh, just to, you know, brush your hair, maybe put on a little bit of makeup if you wear it, at the very least, wash your face and get out of your PJs, if only to put on, I know all of us are commandos, so just to put on a top that looks good, then what you see back, because we are also seeing ourselves within the context of these meetings. So it's truly holding the mirror up to yourself and to the people around you. So what can we do to put other people in our meetings, for example, at ease? If you're in a job interview, the first thing you want to do when you're in a job interview is to communicate that you're at ease with having that interview, first of all. And that those potential, that that potential employer can really depend on you to communicate effectively. And this is sort of the easiest first way to do that. Your brains and your humor and your effective communicating skills will be front and center because nobody's distracted by the laundry line that's behind you, full of the stuff that's drying from this morning's laundry, I've seen that. Nobody will be distracted by the onesies that you're wearing with cereal still dripping down the front, I've seen that. And nobody will be distracted by the bits of food that you might still have stuck to your face. And I've seen all of this in meetings for guilds that I'm involved in here. And these are people that work in Hollywood and should know better, and I've seen all of it.
So it's The word that you use distract is interesting. So something in my frame here, you pointed out to me.
Yeah.
Is distracting.
Yeah, little bit.
So Karen, one day said, alright Laura, we need to make this better. And she told me, she said, this is something I would never think to do myself. So we're gonna start here diving in on the quick makeover. Check out what Karen told me to do. So you put the lamp down on the floor and it bottom lights or backlight and it takes away that big distraction that was behind my head. Then, jump in here anytime Karen.
Oh, I was just gonna say, by way of that lighting, everybody, what just happened? And you would have seen this, Laura, I'm gonna have you pick up that light and put it back down again.
Okay.
The upside of what Laura's doing is something that we actually try to create when we're shooting. Like, for example, when you're creating portraiture for slick marketing pieces, and I'm doing a portrait, when you put that lamp on the floor, look how it lights up all the walls and starts bouncing light. So if you could put that back down on the floor, there you go. There we go. And suddenly, the room becomes filled with light. So it's a cheap and cheerful way to throw some light into your background and it throws light onto you, even if it's just sort of lighting up behind here just a little bit. But it creates more contrast.
Right, and then you, so, and then she also said, add some decor to your set.
Only to break it up a little bit, yeah, there you go.
Yep, okay, so then we've also got this other little plant.
Yep.
And check out this tip, never would have thought about this one. Pulling your books, if you have a bookshelf, to the front. Look at what a big difference that makes.
These are all pulled from the Maria Kondo book of, you know, keeping things neat and tidy. And also it's bouncing light, these are just tricks that we do in set decor, really just to continue to talk to character. And obviously with Laura, we have an intelligent woman that supposedly reads a lot of books. You can see them there on the bookshelf. Yeah, now that could just be set decor, I don't know, that's your secret, that's okay. But subconsciously, all these things start to feed into Laura's story. You know, you see a few plants here, what does that mean? It could mean a number of things, it could mean that she's, she likes other living things. She takes care of other living things quite well, like they are alive, you know.
One is plastic, that makes it easier to keep it alive.
I, not, not to point out, all the plants behind me, by the way, are also plastic because I travel so much, so I just need something to look like it's alive, so.
And, okay, so we've talked a little bit about here, so we're jumping right into the set decor and lighting.
We are.
And I'm gonna put into the chat box for everybody, a downloadable PDF that you can link on now, that you can, it can be a kind of a checklist that we can go through, so.
And while you're doing that, what we look at, when we're looking at, what we're looking at as I bonk my microphone, we look at several things when we're making a frame for a film or a photo. You're gonna be looking at what you're wearing, are, do you have a little bit of zhuzhing going on? Are you wearing reflective glasses or not? There's a big difference, I'm wearing non-reflective glasses, believe it or not, but you can see my ring light if I tip up. What's going on in your background? You know, how are you lighting that? I, for example, have taken just from, I ordered it on Amazon, I took shelving lighting from kitchen, you know, the kitchen shelving that goes under cupboards? And I put it on my bookshelf, just so that there's a little bit more delineation between me and my background. So that's another part of it that helps. The more that you can be sort of separated from your background, so it's not just a deep black hole, it definitely helps. So the other part of it, of course, is we've got outfit, hair and makeup is nice, you know, a little zhuzh is good, our background, and if you've got artwork in the frame, how are you going to use that or not? In this case, Laura's got a very nice colorful piece of art and it's big enough so that it actually sort of does something, it contributes to story. If you've got one little tiny piece of art that nobody can see, sometimes that just ends up looking a bit odd. So, but maybe having a bunch of small pieces together, that creates a little bit more of a statement. So that's, those are just things to think about by way of set decor. And then, you know, looking at your sofa, for example, where are the places that you can bring some color into your background? Because color is always a good thing, when it comes to, in this case, in Laura's background. Right, so, very nice, very, very nice. And also I want to talk about the framing itself. Now, Laura's chosen a very specific kind of framing where it's a little bit wider on her. You're standing, right?
I am.
Yeah, so you're standing, but there's a lot of us here that are a little bit closer. I choose to be closer to my camera, this is a look that I like. I think that it commands a little bit more attention when, for me personally, than being back here or being tipped back. But that's the other thing too, is the position of your computer. Where is your computer? If I take my computer off the stand, I'll show you the stand that it's on, suddenly, it's like this, which is fine, but it's a whole lot of this. And this is the stand, but just put your computer on a stack of books if you can. Because what that does, excuse me, excuse me as I perpetrate a little bit of construction here, what that does is, as you can see, it really gives me a slightly better frame so that I am looking straight into camera like this. So that's just a stack of books, because we're, you know, we're all, most of us are in a COVID situation where you're, if you can't order it on Amazon, the chances of you going out and buying this are not great. I'm in LA and we actually are in a curfew situation right now because we have riots going on and all of our stores now are boarding up in my neighborhood. So we have that to add to all of it. But for you guys, wherever you can get, just in your own home, using lights that you've got in your house, as we saw with Laura, you know, just pulling a lamp and putting it on the floor to light your room a little bit, the most important thing out of all of this is lighting your face. And the easiest hack for that, right? So I've got, I've got a ring light, I'm sure everyone's seen ring lights advertised on Amazon. They're round rings, I don't know, I'll see if I can turn, 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 there's my ring light. Whoop, 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 come here, come here. Sorry, I'm trying to avoid hitting another light, there's my ring light. And it's sort of tilted down to me, and then I've got a side, I've got a side light that I just turned off. Come here, there we go. I've got a little side light that I ordered from Amazon, and it's just got a nice soft shade with a daylight bulb in it, just to give a little bit of balance between these two things. And you guys can see me, for better or for worse, you can see me. But the cheapest and most cheerful way to do all of this is really to put your computer on a table or a temporary desk in front of a window, not in direct sunlight, but indirect sunlight. And sometimes that's just a matter of putting down a silky shade or a bed sheet if it's all direct sunlight coming in, but you'll get a nice diffused light. As you can see with Laura, she's got that going on right now from a window, right? And you're balancing it out, turn off that light again. So she's balancing out the light in her, in her space. She has what we call the key that's coming in towards the side of her face. And so when she turns on her light, there we go, it balances it all out. Now, in your case, you've got a slightly warmer bulb, or did you change those out already? I can't quite tell.
This, no, I didn't change, it's the, it's the yellow light, the tungsten light, as Karen told me.
Right, so a really easy way to enhance your lights is to change out your light bulbs. Most lamps have what they call tungsten bulbs, which is a, it's a color of light. And light will go from 3200 being warm tungsten bulbs that are in lamps, all the way to 5200K, which is daylight. Daylight is a very cool sort of blue light. And when you put that into your lamps in your room during the day, that will balance out what's going on with light coming in through the window. It just looks like you've got another window coming in. But for some people, also, as it does work for Laura in fact, because she's quite pale, she's got that lovely sort of English, that pale English skin, the warmth of that lamp also works for her. So that's something really worth sort of looking at for yourselves. And then last but not least in all of this is audio. And audio, as we all heard, we all have very different levels of audio. And that is predicated by your computer and the microphone that you've got in it. It also can be predicated by whatever microphone you may or may not be using. Some people are using the microphone from the buds that they've got in their ears, which doesn't tend to be the best, I have to say, they're not really built for that. They're built beautifully for using with cell phones. But in a laptop scenario, it's, and this will also be, I think Laura, you've got, is it in the sheet, the one sheet? The information?
No, I did not, right, so I did not include those that I put in the sheet that you should think about a microphone. And whether that is a lapel microphone or
A lavalier.
Lavalier. Or a desktop microphone like the one that you have.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of them. I recommend, the best kind of microphone is like a desktop microphone. And what I've got, in fact, is a camera mic, I'm kind of cheating a little bit, but I've got it on an arm. I've got this whole arm that just clips on to my desk because that way I can move around my desk and do different kinds of meetings. I also have a podcast, so I can use this. But there are wonderful microphones called BLU, B-L-U, blue microphones, and just, you know, troll around on Amazon, they're all different prices. And you can get one that can sit right in front of you on your desk. Or you can do what Laura's done, and you literally, with your USB, it clips right into your laptop and you adjust on Zoom, in where your little microphone is on Zoom, there's a little arrow there and you'll be given an option to change to the audio for that lavalier mic or for the mic that you're gonna be putting into your laptop. I'll show you guys the difference, because I'll, hold on just a second. I'm gonna take my mic, I'm gonna unplug it so you can see the difference. Okay, so how's that? Is that a little bit different, maybe?
It's so different.
Minj, you get a lot of room tone, right? So, when you put it back in, I'll wait for it to, it's, oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Better. And then, it depends on where you position this. When I'm recording a podcast, I have it really intimately placed next to my mouth because then I sound like a radio host, hello, testing. But you don't need to do that on Zoom. I actually prefer to have the mic, now labs, labs are great, it makes you look very professional. But if you have a microphone, just keep it just a little bit out of picture for yourself because then it's, you know, it's just more sort of casual. But that's, that's the other component of all of this to consider, is that. Okay, so where do we, what have I missed?
Yeah, so, okay, so, and going down the checklist, you've got wardrobe, so you're choosing the character that you are going to present in your online story, which is you.
It's, it's your best self.
Yeah, and so, and as an example, I always try to wear a jacket at least to meetings because I want to look like a professional. And I'm still holding on to those lawyer days, but that's another thing. Karen, I love her jacket choice because, and tell us about, about this jacket, or about the style of jacket.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. So I try to dress on my meetings, I just delivered a show to television a couple of weeks ago. So I was on meetings like this a lot, working with my post-supervisor editors, colorists, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so I wear jackets that have like a motorcycle cut. I've gotta be, I try to present myself as somebody that is a creative. And so I have a, I will not be wearing the kind of jackets, for example, that Laura's wearing because I don't want to necessarily look that button down. And I'm also in LA, in LA, we're much more laid back. If you show up looking too terribly formal, people start asking you if you're a police detective. So you can't really do that here in the entertainment business. So, you know, I wear some details with jewelry and I've got a little necklace on. And that's the other thing too, with jewelry for Zoom specifically, I usually recommend wearing jewelry that's not too distracting unless that's your signature. Then go to town, do that thing. But otherwise, you know, just having, I wear little studs and then my little accessories otherwise. But for me, I love wearing jackets, also because I'm, I am 57 at this point. So, you know, I try to, I try to throw around a little bit of the authority with the jackets, the groovy jackets. So, there's that. Because I'm usually the boss.
Yeah, you're picking out your outfit to match the occasion.
Yeah.
To match the audience and to tell, to be who you want to be in that scenario.
Yeah, I'm the director, so it's, apart from the fact that it's challenging as a woman in Hollywood to be the boss for other people, not for the women that are actually bosses, but, you know, we do, we do play that role of dressing so that we are demarcated as the authoritative figure on set. And I'm very aware of that. I'd always dress comfortably, but I usually have a jacket on and some kick-ass boots. But I usually have a jacket on and, uh, some kick ass boots or tennies. Um, and I dress a little bit like a boy, honestly, uh, because I, I like to. But I also do, um, because it's just easier to move around. But everything is high end boy. So everything's going to be like, uh, three hundred dollar jeans matched with fifteen hundred dollar boots. Which by the way, I get on consignment. So they're all high end things that I pay pennies on the dollar for, but don't tell anyone. And, um, contributing to, you know, try to, try to do my best in terms of reusing resources. But it all contributes to, um, telling a story about me. And my, my, um, creativity and, um, my authority. And, um, to a certain degree, certainly in this environment, uh, uh, you know, I'm a director, so people assume that I'm, I'm making a decent salary. So whether or not I am, I do try to dress for success in this market. So all of those things play into the storytelling. And it sounds highly manipulative, but it's, it's really not. It's about telling a story concisely about yourself quickly and efficiently so that you can really get to the meat of what you want to talk about and what you want to communicate. So there's no distractions. It's all subliminal, quick messaging.
Right.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. So, okay. So we've got the person who's the main focus of the story that we're telling. And then the next thing is what's in the frame? So where are you positioned in the camera? Are you centered? Are you close? Are you a little farther away? Are you turned?
Yeah.
How is the camera positioned? Is it doing the ceiling?
Yeah, there's a lot of people.
Little boob shot.
Yeah. There's a lot of people doing this. Yeah.
Right.
And, and if you're doing this typically, uh, typically I'm finding in meetings, it tends to be with people of a certain age that are doing this. Not to point any fingers, because I am fifty-seven. But, um, if, yeah, if you can frame yourself up so that you're high and nicely framed in here, it's very helpful. If you're going to go to the side, which you can, you can go to the side, one way or the other. Um, uh, it's fine, but just be cognizant of why you're doing that. If you want to be, if you want to hold attention, center is a good thing. And so you light accordingly and you frame yourself accordingly. I had a client that I met with today and we were doing an online shoot and the subject of the online shoot was, um, a man of renown. And, um, just as the pandemic had broken, he had to, um, he was asked by, uh, um, uh, folks to do, to sort of do a shout out to, um, all the people that he, um, he leads. And he put his laptop on the floor of his living room in New York. Um, dressed in a T-shirt. And this is a man that normally wears a full suit, normally tie, the whole nine yards, didn't shave. Um, looked like he had just rolled out of bed, put his laptop on the floor and proceeded to deliver a speech. Um, telling everybody that was under his purvey, uh, that, uh, it's all going to be all right. You know, things will get back to normal. So.
Of course it doesn't convey that.
Thinking.
The non-verbal, I mean, just like in person, right? The, the non-verbal cues.
Yeah.
Are just as important, sometimes more important than what you're saying.
A hundred percent, one hundred percent. So all of these things, it sounds like a lot, but if you just did one thing a day to address all of these different things, it's actually kind of fun. Now, I have to admit, I'm, I'm a director of photography and a director and a producer. I own a media company in LA and I love nothing better than tweaking picture. So, you know. Some of you will hate this, but probably you'll really enjoy the results once you kind of dig down.
Well, and it's, I mean, it really comes down to, was it four things? So you've got basically wardrobe, hair and makeup.
What do you look like?
Right. Wardrobe, hair and makeup. Then you've got your set design.
Yep. What's behind you.
Right. You've got your lighting and your audio.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. Those are the four big things. And, okay, let's jump in. Sarah, are you ready? Okay, let's go ahead and unmute yourself. And let's, Karen, do you mind taking a look at Sarah's background? Lighting, audio, going through those four things. And would it be helpful, um, Sarah, maybe if you could take a minute just to tell us a little bit about you, so that we could help you, Karen, really more than.
It's all context, right?
Right. Can help you tell the story that you want to tell, if that is comfortable for you.
Okay. Um, so basically I just use Zoom really for, um, teaching. Teaching and for sometimes some of my students are in hospital. So I like to be able to give them a really, um, you know, positive and happy and bright, um, environment for them to come out into, for them to get into a different space for twenty minutes. So yeah, I try not, and, and also we, I live in Tokyo in a tiny apartment. We haven't got much choice. There's no, I haven't got, I haven't got lots of rooms to go to or lots of, um, space to use.
Yeah, I, I think all of us have that dilemma, Sarah, honestly, because it, even if you have a lot of space, inevitably you have dogs and kids and you've got to find a corner to get a little bit of privacy. So I, I totally get that. You have the most lovely colored, whoop, colored shirt on. So that's wonderful. And you've got, and I'm assuming your necklace is one of your, is this one of your signature pieces?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's, it's a plastic piece of, yeah, just, yes.
Does it make you feel good when you wear it?
Yeah, and I, I just like to wear, because in Japan, everybody normally wears like dark colors, gray and black and white. So I like to, um, wear some bright colors.
Beautiful.
Go out of my way to wear bright colors.
Yeah, and it, it looks, you know, I, um, I also love to wear, uh, emerald, uh, sorry, uh, um, not emerald, sapphires. Sapphire color looks, any of the primary colors, bright pinks, that sort of thing also helps to draw the eye. So you've done exactly the right thing. Um, let's look at your lighting, because I think that's, that's what jumps out to me the most. Is that you've got, uh, your light sources coming from one side at this point. So I, and I know you're, you have, there you go. So you've got a little bit of light coming here. So are you, when it comes to doing your meetings, which is lovely, I love the view, by the way, I've shot in Japan and I've, I, I lived in Japan for a little while, so I miss all of it. Um, are you at a desk or a table that you can, that you can move yourself around a little bit?
I can, yeah.
Okay, so what we want.
Sorry.
Ideally, you're actually facing just the direction of the window. That would be ideal. Should we try that now?
Me to face the window.
There you go.
Like that. Yep.
There's going to be a door.
That's okay. Uh huh.
Wow.
And suddenly it's all about you. Do you see the difference in terms of lighting for you?
Definitely. Yes, yes.
Barbara did a great hand signal. She just, you can see her, she's doing this with her hand to say, you can see your face.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, given that you're teaching at this point, um, uh, it would be very helpful for your students to really see you. Now Sarah, I'm wondering, do you have any books that you could put just a couple of books under your laptop to raise it up just a little bit?
Can you wait one moment?
Yep, of course.
Oh, and so while Sarah's gone, I'm also noticing there's a ceiling light behind her. So at nighttime, that would be something that she'd have to.
Yeah, it would be something to deal with because it would be backlighting. But we'll, you know, we're going to try a couple of things just to see what happens because her head actually covers that lamp. So it might be okay. Okay, now Sarah, have you got the, uh, there we go.
Stack about that high.
Yeah, well, even that is better. I would be, I would, that's very good, actually. I would even do one more book if you can. Hmm, a little bit more. It's going to feel, you're going to have sort of a stack that's about six inches of books under you.
I'll bring some of my fake books over to your house and drop them off later, Sarah.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah. All of your French philosophy books that you're always reading. Yes. Oh, lovely. Really lovely. Now, we're going to as well, so in your background now, which is working for you, your background is actually kind of framing you up. And you're, that's right, you're just, there you go, keeping yourself straight. So we don't feel like we're on a, a ship listing in a heavy seas.
I think some of the books that.
There you go. Wonderful. Now just pull your laptop down just a little bit. So a little less headroom. There we go. Good, beautiful. Now, we've already made a really good, you're already have a beautiful portrait here, Sarah. So this is great. Now, I would suggest in the background, because you've got a, a yellow jacket.
Yes.
Stealing focus. Yeah, just put those, just put those on either on the floor or the sofa behind you.
Or Karen, if you, if you just move the camera a little, over a little to change.
You could do that too. Yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to use the, we're, we're going to experiment a little bit with the lamps behind her.
Whoops.
There we go.
Hide stuff.
No, that's great, Sarah. That's really great. Now I am also going to suggest you've got a lamp in your background, in the background here, a standing lamp. Could you turn that on for me? Ooh, wonderful. So when we look at that, the lamp is a little hot in picture and hot, meaning that it's sort of stealing focus from you. If you were to lay that lamp on the ground in front of your sofa, let's take a look and see if it throws enough light, just to light up your background a little bit.
This is stuff that once you do it once, you just kind of remember what your setup is. And then when you go to get ready for your call, you just kind of put the lamp down fast. Take the coats off of the, the hangers and get ready for your call and then can put it back up after your call is over.
Yeah, kind of like that. I do that. I, I go from one end of my desk to the other. Now Sarah, what are you seeing in frame for yourself at this point?
Yep.
You've got.
The fact that I probably wouldn't want to be there, but.
Yeah, I, you know, your background's absolutely fine because we can see you really beautifully. So the only thing I would add at this point, depending on, on the weather, of course, in, in Tokyo, that can be a little unpredictable, depending on the season. The only thing I would suggest at this point is if you wanted to have enhanced some of the light that's going on on your table, is just getting a couple of short lamps that have almost like a, uh, like mine, I'm just going to turn this off for a sec. It's just a lamp that I got on, on Amazon.
Yeah.
But, um, uh, it just has a sort of a semi see-through, uh, shade. And that could easily with a daylight bulb, so you can see me turning it on and off. They're off, on. It just throws a little bit of extra light and that will help you on those cloudy days. But I think you're.
I've got this one.
Oh, great.
But it's.
No, so, so put it beside your, put it beside or behind, there you go, and turn it off. There you go. You've got a little bit of light going on you. That's great. So that's, that's also lovely. That's a nice blue light. That's throwing a little bit of extra onto you. Now, the only other thing that I would suggest, and I don't know, do you, do you wear much in the way of makeup at all when you're normally out and about meeting your students or what do you do?
No, not really.
Okay, because you don't need to. You're lovely as it is and the color of your shirt is great. Um, and how do you normally wear your hair? Do you put your hair back in a, as you are wearing it now?
Yes, yes, but I can do whatever. I can take it out. I can.
Yeah, I would, you know, I would, I, you've got curl, I've got curly hair, believe it or not, like you. And it gets, my hair gets really curly when I'm in, uh, any kind of damp. So that would be the only thing. I would take just a little bit of, um, just a little bit of hand lotion, believe it or not, and just smooth your curls out a little bit in the morning. And that would be great.
Okay, because if I take it out, I look like an electrocuted koala.
Let, let's see the, the electrocuted koala. Let's see.
It's crazy.
Actually, it's very pretty and I know, I know, but let it go down for just a second without pulling it back. It's actually a really beautiful look on camera for you if you were to just get a little hand lotion just to smooth it out in the morning. So it wasn't quite so frizzy. But that's something you can experiment with. You've got lovely, lovely hair. It's a great asset for you. So I would use it as opposed to hiding it actually for you. And, and because we're on Zoom, because we're on camera, I would do just a little bit of lip gloss, a little pinky lip gloss. And that would, it just, you know, it just gives you a little bling. And I'm sure the kids would love that too. Anything, you know, kids are really easily entertained. But you look really lovely, really lovely. Um, the other thing I would suggest maybe with necklaces too, I like the necklace you're wearing just fine, but if you want to change it up. Also, like I'm wearing a necklace that's short that you can see on camera. So that would be another way of doing it. Yep, just, just, it's all about framing up your face, right? What can you do? And your hair does that, your necklace, your jewelry does that. And also your background is doing that right now. I do encourage you to look at your background, um, uh, uh, at some point with some other lamps, just to light up those walls just a little bit.
Okay, yeah.
And you look great. What, how do you feel right now?
Oh, good. Yeah, I can, I definitely, the lighting, putting the computer in front of the window made a huge difference.
It does, doesn't it? And I can see your lovely blue eyes now. And you've got a fabulous smile. So it's, you know, really good on you.
So what with the, um, is it better to be close to the, to look slimmer? Is it better to be close or far away?
If you want to look slimmer, this is the cheat. You're going to be like this. You're turning yourself a little bit. And then you just turn your body, keep your face forward. That's, yeah, that's the, keep your face forward, but turn your body. It's the red carpet cheat. We all had to learn that at some point, but really I wouldn't worry about that. You've got nothing to worry about when it comes to that. Really what slims you up is picking the computer up and putting them onto those books. When it's down below, it's all this for all of us. So it's just like, you know, it's, it's never flattering for males or females. That low shot is something that as photographers, you always try to avoid.
But yeah, and this takes away the double chin too, having it up higher.
It does. And, and if you do want to slim, the cheat in photography is to have the camera up just a little bit higher. Because then if you're shooting down just a little bit, that actually brings out your cheekbones and you have lovely cheekbones. So, you know, it's an easy fix. But, but you're doing all the right things already. You are easy.
Right, okay, that's good.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yeah.
Thank you. And one more question. So where, I always find it hard to do, to look at the camera or to look at the people in the screen and to have it gallery view or speaker view.
That's up to you, but really if you're talking to somebody, you're going to be doing what I'm doing now. Cause there is a difference. When I'm talking to you.
Yes.
Via the lens, um, it does, does it feel like I'm talking straight to you?
It does, yes.
Yeah. As opposed to looking down at your image and speaking to you. It does feel like I'm a little off. So when you're trying to make your point with your students, always, you'll get used to it. Put a little piece of tape, like right where your lens is.
Okay.
Two pieces of tape right on either side. So you know exactly where that button is. And just envision the student that's in front of you and you can communicate all the warmth and humor and teaching that you need to do straight down the barrel.
Okay.
Let's just practice.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you, Karen. Really.
Oh, thank you, Sarah.
I learned a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering, Sarah. And Nakazi, I see, was playing with her lighting a little bit. Cause she has also volunteered to have a, a quick look at her Zoom presence. Are you ready? Go ahead and unmute yourself or I can unmute.
Sorry, I was, uh.
There she is.
Oh, oh no. I had a, I had it all set up. I don't know what happened. Um, anyways.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and what kind of story you would like to relate to everybody so that we can.
So, um, sure. I, um, I have a project management consulting, um, business, a startup and, um, so. a project management consulting um, business, a startup, and um, so most of the time I'd want to project more of a, I guess, a, a professional image, um. I, I didn't get dressed up as you, as you did, in a suit, but um, it's um, yeah, and, and that's kind of basically it, so most of the time I would have uh, most of my meetings would be conference calls, some of them would be, they would be some that would be um, you know, like, like Zoom meetings, so anything that would be, yeah, I'd appreciate any help, um, and, and the reason I'm, I'm interested in it specifically because um of my complexion, and, yeah, so just to try and make myself look as, as good as I can. And uh, any tricks, uh, what you were just talking about in terms of looking straight at the camera, that's something that I never do, like, or looking straight at the lens, um, that's something that I don't do, but I will do. Um, yeah, so anyhow, I've been, I've been, I've been adjusting my um the height of the um, I've, I've got my computer onto, on a, on a Staples um on a, on a, a Staples stack of paper, and um something else, like a lo- box, empty box, and I've maneuvered, um I can't really do much about the light, because it's, it's a little bit late here, it's um, it's kind of about ten forty-nine PM. And I'm, I'm in like a, a second bedroom slash office, so I have moved the light a little bit. Um, and I don't know whether it should be more light, uh, I, I can't sort of add any more light.
Well, it is, so you've got a situation, I think, with a bit of top light going on, is that correct? Do you have an overhead light on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, top lights are tricky, because what it does is it, it makes most of us look like we've got deep shadows under our eyes, even if you don't, that's what it does. So, it's all about light coming to your face. So in an ideal world, like the light that you've got, what's the light that you brought in there Nakazi?
So there is a light here that I have, it's just a lamp.
Great.
Yeah, so, I just can't get it off, like I don't even know, if I put it down towards me, it's too bright.
Yeah, so, well, it, it is fairly bright, so I'm curious, if you were, I just out of interest, I, I don't think this'll work right now, but your best case scenario, and I don't know, do you do meetings in the evening like this very often?
Uh, no, they're normally in the day, they're normally during the time, yeah.
Well, you're a great example, cause now I've lost my light too, um, I, it, because right now in LA, it's eight o'clock, so I'm just losing my light, um, so my ring light just throws this perfect light on me, uh, and I've got another balancing light, so that might be some homework for you, um.
Okay.
But moving forward, but be- because you're sort of a great example of what not to do with top light.
Yeah, I can, but it's dark, like, when I'm looking at it.
Yeah, is this typically where you sit during the day?
During the day, I would be sitting here or, yeah, normally here, yeah, so normally, I, I adjusted it, cause I, I was listening to everything you were talking about, so normally, the edge of the window is there.
Uh-huh.
Uh, so that's why I kind of moved it.
So during the day, do you get a lot of backlighting going on?
There is a lot, like right there, there is, there's a, like a window, yeah, so there's a lot of light.
So if we were to throw Feng Shui out the window, which some of us have had to do, would you be able to put your table or your desk more towards that light instead of behind you?
Yeah, I could do that, yeah, I could definitely like.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna have to do, if any of you have windows behind you, I just went through this with my husband. He's got this giant window behind him and a small office at home, and uh he, we, we experimented so many different times with where we could reposition his desk. And at the end of the day, because his wife is a director of photography, I was able to light him so that, because he liked the window behind him, so the secret with that is, you just have to have a strong enough light to offset for the, the window behind you. Um, but in your case, what I would say to keep it cheap and cheerful, and the fact that you're not yet a director of photography, um, is that if you turn your desk or table so that you can use that window as your key light, you're suddenly gonna pop up on Zoom for yourself. But, and, and the other thing that I wanna point out for folks in the background here, is that you have a lovely painting in frame, but it's kind of stealing focus for you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanna look at that painting now.
Well, so basically though, if I move the, if I move my desk around and the light is um the, it'll be, that photo would actually be, kind of be in the background.
Great, fantastic. Can you pick up your, would you be willing to pick up your laptop and show me what your reposition would look like?
So, it would look either like this.
Beautiful.
Or, or there's nothing in the background, if I'm totally.
Which is fine, by the way.
Okay.
That's absolutely fine, if you have nothing in the background, that's also absolutely fine.
Yeah, okay.
It really is about you, so that you're not competing. Um, either one of those is fine, you just need to make sure that you're not competing with the artwork, cause you're very close to the artwork, and, and what you might find too is, if you stand, if, where would you be exactly with that window? Where you're standing now, or would you be closer or farther away?
Um, I would be in the same position, I would just be, yeah, I would just be, it's about uh, a ten feet away.
Yeah, you're ten feet from the window?
Yeah, I'm about, yeah, I'm about ten feet away from the window.
You might wanna be a little bit closer, actually, if you're about five or six feet off of your window, if you can manage that, you won't have direct light onto you, at least you shouldn't. Um, and you can also use, I saw that you had some blinds up. That's another way to beautifully diffuse light, if you have direct light coming in through a window, put the blind down. Cause that'll give you a nice soft box light onto you.
Ew.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, not right now, of course, cause there's no light coming in. But in the morning, and by the way, you're very welcome to Zoom me, and we can repo you in the morning and just experiment a little bit. But with all of these, is all, as you guys can hear, you know, all of these things just means that you're going to look at your background very closely, so that it's all about you. It's not about your background, and it's not about us not being able to see you. Now, black and brown people have an additional challenge by way of that, because you've got nice warm complexions. So, um, that also is, uh, to my mind, it's a real advantage, particularly as you've got a back wall that Laura would disappear into, should she have been standing in front of your window in the morning against that background, you, she'd just disappear into the whole thing, so that back wall is probably gonna do very well for you, because it's a light color against your darker skin.
Yeah, yeah.
Sense?
Yep, yeah, it does.
And what do you typically wear when you're on, when you're doing meetings?
Oh, like a business suit with a jacket.
Oh, got it, okay.
A little bit more like Laura.
Yeah.
I'm wearing kid's face right now, so, I'm not exactly, I'm not looking very.
For goodness sake, it's like eleven o'clock at night there, so, you know, this is what it is. I know, I just, I spoke to my dad not too long ago, and he's like, I'm going to bed, just, I'm going to bed, in, in London, Ontario.
Yeah.
So what other questions do you have? Lighting is your, is gonna be a big friend to you.
Yeah, that was my key, um, that was my key question, I'm just not, I'm not really sure where the lighting should be, um I always think there's too much light, um, I would never have uh, thought about you, pulling down the, the blinds, um, you know, they're like silhouette blinds, and they do have a you know, like a diffusion sort of um, screen through them, so, I would never, I would have just opened, opened the window, um, so that's, that's good to know.
Well, you might find yourself as the light changes over the course of the day, you might find yourself doing that, but uh, in, in film and TV, we consistently take very bright lights, and we put dimmer switches on them uh, so we can dim them up and down, but we also put diffusion, we literally take silk fabric and drop it in fr- in front of very bright lights, and so that's another really cheap and cheerful way to light yourself, you know, if you find yourself having to do meetings at night, um, having a couple of bright lights and throwing a, a, a thin piece of white fabric, like a, like a thin bed sheet or a silk scarf, it has to be white, because if it has color, that's what color is gonna show on you, so, you know. Uh, but those are very cheap and cheerful ways, you can order silk material on Amazon these days, and throw it over a nice bright light. There's a lot of ways that you can jerry-rig these things, if you start sort of thinking outside the box in terms of your lighting, and how can you soften the edges of bright light so that you're creating this nice soft glow that reflects onto your face, and typically windows will do that. Does that make sense? As your key, as it were.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that was, that was basically my, my key question, just, just that, and also just the uh, height, you know, I had it, I think I had it a little bit too low, so I'm assuming this is, this is probably a little bit better.
You look good.
Ever, ever, so.
Well, you might also consider, I don't know what, what are you using for audio right now, is it your, your computer?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So for twelve bucks, you can get a plug-in lavalier that you can just clip, um, like Laura has got. And if you're gonna use the little mics, the little lav mics, which are, you know, twelve to twenty bucks, you clip it as close as you can, you clip it with the microphone pointed towards your mouth. And that will give you really great sound, and everybody just know that in Zoom, you have to go into the little microphone symbol down in the corner and click on the arrow, and once you, once you plug your mic in with that USB line, it will pop up as a choice that you click, so you just need to, and you can test that by calling yourself on Zoom. Um, just to test all of these things, call yourself up or record yourself speaking to camera, and then play the, play it back to yourself and see what you look like and see what you sound like, it's a really good test.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So much, and I'll, I'll just model this little microphone for you guys, it was, I think, twelve dollars, and you can get an extension, you guys can see this, that clips on, and the cord just keeps going so I can walk around if I need to, or, so if you're doing presentations, or if you're standing still, it's still a, you know, it's a, a little distracting, but really cheap, easy way to enhance your audio.
Can you give them a little, unplug it for a sec and show everybody, or, let everybody hear what you sound like when you unplug?
Here, let me, cause I, I wonder, yeah, okay, ready, here we go. Okay, it's on right now, and now it is off.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
And so, plugging it in, hold on. Just wait for it.
Oh, you're on.
Okay, there we go, there's the, there's, it plugged in again.
And then unplug and say, you know, give us a couple of test tests.
Okay, here I go, unplugging again. Okay, can you hear me now?
Keep going, keep talking.
There's a big difference in, in the audio with just this tiny little fifteen dollar microphone, plugging it back in.
So what, what microphones do everyone, is they take out what they call room tone. Um, audio, when you're in a room, it bounces off all the walls. So, you know, when you're in, in an audio booth, for example, when we're recording voiceover, um we'll stick somebody into a, into a booth, it's all padded out, and, and right now, voice artists all over the world who can't go in and record anything, are sitting in their closets full of clothes, because it's a nice quiet dead space, it's called dead, uh, because there's no echo. So, for example, even with this thing, a little bit closer to my mouth, you know, it does, it does make me sound like a radio host. But even just a little bit farther away, it's still much better than me and. And suddenly you can hear all the room tone of office. So, all of these things, believe it or not, plugging back in, all of these things are what inform us in film. You can, it's so funny, with low budget movies, if, if a low budget movie that isn't shot that great, but has amazing audio, you can get away with all kinds of sense, as long as your audio is great. So this is, this will help you as well, it will make you, make what you have to say and how you would like to communicate that so much more intimate, and it will feel to other people like you're really with them.
Thank you so much Nakazi for, for volunteering for that great tutorial, and we had a couple of questions pop up because of your great prompts, one being bland background, that's okay. Because you wanna be the focus, so that's, Barbara was also asking, is this bland background gonna be okay? Um, and then she was also asking about movement, so when we're talking, and I do tend to talk with my hands a lot. Um, what, tell, talk about movement Karen, really quickly, and then we're gonna get to Puyen, if she still has time, to do a, a quick makeover of her background and, and lighting. Wiggling, talking, eating, drinking, what, what do we think about all these things on Zoom?
Well, I mean, it's, it's all appropriate to what you're doing, right? I do, uh, in my neighborhood, uh, I am the captain of our neighborhood cocktail crawl, which we do normally once a year in June. But because we're all closed in, we've been doing our, our cocktail crawl in the neighborhood, um, uh, twice a month. And so we all sit and nibble and tell tales on each other and have a cocktail, very appropriate. However, I've been in production meetings recently with twenty-somethings who in their onesies are sitting there eating a bowl of cereal, and it is just not cool. Um, i- it's just too distracting, is, at the end of the day, whatever we see you do in here uh, could be what distracts us from the message that you're trying to communicate. So, I'm all for people drinking water, for sure. But if you're chugging a beer, just know, depending on your audience, there is gonna be a perception level there, so that, that's just part of it, I think, and if you're speaking, um, you're gonna have to have a drink of water once in a while, so I, I got no problem. I use my hands, you guys have been seeing that, you can use your hands to Venn diagram whatever you need to in the course of a meeting, and you can bring emphasis to it, and for that matter, well, you can see I've got my, I painted my fingernails this week, but um, you know, you can also use things to make a point, if you start utilizing your camera, for example, teachers that are in the room, maybe there are fun things that you can do to make a point with your students. It really is, when you're doing this, there obviously is a lot of comedy involved, if you're doing this, there's a lot of aggression involved, so just, you know, be aware, and again, record yourself doing things, if you play that thing back, doing, drinking, eating, pointing at yourself, you know, that sort of thing, play it back to yourself, and it, it will be startling. Make sense? Okay.
I also like that point too, of using Zoom to do a test run of how you're gonna look, what your makeup's gonna look like, what your hair looks like, the whole background thing before you go into a meeting, so you know that your setup and that your camera angle is exactly the way you want it to be, before you even begin.
And, you know, you can get super cheap and cheerful about it too, if you don't even wanna do that, just do this.
Yeah.
Right? Put yourself on, take a photo of yourself, and you look precisely wonderful.
Oh, I thought we were gonna see you.
No, you, cause you're, in my screen, you are, you are what was figuring prominently. So that's another way to do it, just take a photo of yourself on the iPhone and, and make some judgment calls, take a look at what you look like and your background looks like, look at your lighting.
Absolutely, and we are starting to run over, I feel badly about this, but this is such a great conversation, and we're learning so much, I think. Um, Puyen, do you still have time to do a, a quick makeover of your Zoom appearance?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Karen.
Okay.
Okay, Karen, how can Puyen, oh, actually, Puyen, please, tell Karen about yourself and about what what image you are trying to present.
Yes, sure, thanks, Laura. Hi, Karen.
Hello.
My name is Puyen. Uh, professionally, I have a full time job. I am now constantly on calls using web apps with my colleagues across Japan, US and so on. And on the side, enhance my connection with Laura, I am extremely passionate about mindset. And since last month in May, I've been embarking on a journey to give live virtual sessions to train people on mindset. Including putting people into hypnosis to give them therapy to enhance self beliefs. So I really wanna get come across as someone who has who can really command the audience and take charge of the audience to inspire and empower them with connections, personal connections. So they can absorb as much as they can from me. So to allow them to dream more, do more and become more. I don't usually dress like this on presentation, but I'm actually on my gym gear with a plan to go out for a run right after this. I have learned from Laura to get a pin mic. I hope my audio is clear. I'm connecting through my iPad. So I've got my AirPods on to listen in with the audio jack for the pinned mic. And as a tip for everyone is when I was rehearsing myself for the live session that I shared recently with Laura's community and broader. I actually connect two devices to test run and make sure I'm, as I'm speaking, I'm also listening with my audio, audio and BZO and my own appearance. So I'm in a very bright room on the third floor of my house. I have a window right in front of me to my left and above me. So I don't have any light on right now, I'm just leveraging natural light as of during the daytime.
So I have a question, the light that's above you, where is that coming from?
It's a window.
Oh, it's a skylight.
It's a, yes, so it's a window. I can try and close the blind. I need to, but I just try to be environmental friendly by not using electricity. And I just leveraging sunlight, but on my right, I, there is a white cupboard.
Got it.
Yeah.
You 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 present beautifully. Um, and I'm wondering, and I'm wondering, when you, which direction are you looking right now? Where's your camera?
I'm using the iPad on landscape, so the camera should be on my left with a home button on my right. So I'm looking at the screen. I like iPads because it feels like I'm actually looking at the camera. But in fact, I'm staring at the screen right now with the grid view of yourself plus other audience.
So what I'm seeing, and you might see this as well, is you're not actually looking right at the camera.
Yes, I am not, yeah, so I need to.
Yes, when you're doing your hypnosis, which is great, I I love your, I I love the description of the work that you're doing. It's, it's just so inspiring, so thank you for doing that. We need a lot of that right now, that is for sure. Um, when it comes to uh, the lighting, I I think you actually need a little bit more lighting coming onto your face.
Yes.
Um, so do you, the window that's in front of you, do you have the shade down right now or or what is?
No, so I, the window I have right now. Jet houses in Japan, we have a very tiny gaps between neighbors. So it's actually window with a few feet and then that's the wall of the neighbor, which is beige beige color. Or I can change to another window where it's facing the back of my house. And it has got the apartments, but it may be brighter this way. But I have got far more gap in between to really bring in the sunlight, which is east facing. And it's about twelve o'clock, twelve noon in Tokyo.
And if you were to settle your ca, settle your your uh, iPad so that you are more, so that the camera is more eye level for you, how would you do that?
I would have to adjust the stand on my iPad. And normally, when I present, I do, I do tilt the iPad around. But yes, I do adjust it. I just have it on a stand on my iPad that I would be able to adjust to a varying degree where I, as I deemed necessary.
So if you were to pick up your iPad and just raise it a couple of inches right now, let's take a look at you, at you.
Okay, let me see. I do need to leverage on books and toys.
There you go. Better, definitely better. And I would, I would do it maybe even one more and then is it possible with your iPad stand to tilt it a little bit towards you? Cuz right now it's tilted up just a little bit.
So make it more level?
Yep, make it as la, there you go, beautiful. Now, can you move it along just a little bit? Right now, we're seeing right down your hallway. So is it possible just to move along just a little bit?
Yes, um, let me close the door, give me a second.
Oh, and it might just be closing the door, quite frankly. Cuz then you'll have privacy too.
Yeah.
You look great. I like your cupboards in the background, they're so charming.
Yes, this is my kid's learning space.
Yes, it's very. So if you were to move, if you were to move along just a little bit more so that the outside of your hair has cr, has the cream wall behind it. It defines you just a little bit more, there you go. And move your iPad along just a little bit.
Yep.
There you go, and even more so that you're center in picture.
Okay.
Good, very nice. So what I like about this is that that the light is hitting your face a little bit more. And you're a beautiful woman, so it's like we want to see you're beautiful as my hu, my Jewish husband would say, shana punim. Your beautiful face. And the light now is bouncing uh, uh, in a more flattering way. And also by you raising up your iPad, now we can see right into your eyes. So if you were to look at your camera, I know you're looking around, but look in your camera for just a second, there you go. That is beautiful, what's going on right now with your face. I'm ju, I'm just gonna hold on, I'm gonna take, see if I can find my cellphone somewhere, oh, here it is. I'm just gonna take a picture. Okay. Here we go, so look in the camera, very nice. Good. You looked away, I caught you and I'm looking away.
I think I feel like I have to look at the the top left screen, the top, the top left of the iPad screen. Closer to the camera.
So where do you think you're, look at, look at the camera, at the camera where you think, right like that, where are you looking?
Middle, yeah, uh, top to middle left.
So my suggestion.
Closer to.
Top to middle left, so my suggestion, once you kind of get this down, because you're gonna be delivering particularly for him, hypnosis too. Your looking into the lens is gonna be very beneficial uh, as you do this. So put a little piece of tape right on either side of where you think you should be looking to get that direct peek at your, at your audience, so they can really see into your eyes. And hear and um, capture the emotion that you're, that you're talking about as you lead them through these sessions. That would be a great thing. Um, the other thing is, uh, if if I were you too, is just taking a little bit of light. Uh, it's just a super simple thing too, is experimenting with light on, is it on a table or a desk that you've got your your uh, computer on?
I've got a table.
I would get two little lights, just small lights that have um, like a silky. You can probably order them on Amazon for like ten bucks each, that have little silky shades and put them on either side of your computer. Because that will give you, right now, your light is a little bit flat. But if you did that, you would pop from your background a little bit more. So just putting those lights and using daylight or um, daylight bulbs, which when they sell bulbs like this in the hardware store, I think they call it bright white. Um, put those little lights in and just experiment with that a little bit. You can always return this stuff if it doesn't work, but that will help you to pop as well. But you look great, really great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, I will try that, yes.
Does this, how does this feel in this configuration to you? In terms of what you're seeing on screen?
Uh, yeah, I feel great.
Okay.
And and in fact, the position that you guided me right now was the position I used a co, um, a couple of weeks ago on a growth mindset session with hypnosis. I I do that for a reason because the other desk I'm using is elevated, but it's brown background. So the the organizers say, Puyen, you need to be brighter. So I was like, so I switched to another desk, which is my kid's desk, has got a white background. And then this is how I sat and they said that I looked great and I've not really thought of that would actually make, that that was the one that made the difference. I thought they say when I look great was me looking great, but not the background. Yeah, so now I know it's a combination.
Yeah, absolutely. And and I'm betting that you're gonna be doing gatherings like this, like we all are for quite a long time yet. So the other thing that some of us are looking at, especially when you have a limited space like this and you don't have much, what they call depth of field. There's not much separation between you and the background, is actually to put uh, a, like a linen drape that you can pull the drape across your background, just cover up whatever is behind you. And just let whatever natural light hit that drape, because then there's nothing to distract and it's gonna be all about you in that frame. And you can get those, you can get those ceiling um, uh, drapery little hooks and and not rods, but I don't know what they're called, actually. But you can run a curtain just in front of your kids' um, cupboards and door. And that will create a really discreet, intimate, very beautiful uh, background for you too. It's easy for you just to pull the drape and sit down and you're done. And you look like.
I like the idea.
A very professional environment. And that's a, that's an easy fix, putting up something like that.
Yes, that is a great suggestion, thank you. I will certainly take that on board. A pleasure, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a pleasure working with all of you guys. That's just something to keep in mind, everybody, is that really this is just about experimenting. You're not limited to anything. It's really, once you start thinking about your lighting and what's behind you or not, what's above you or not. You'll start realizing that your environment in this box is something that you can really have fun and design so that you you pop for whoever you're you're speaking to.
And Karen, we just got a new question and more about backgrounds. I, so I was thinking too about virtual backgrounds and um, the question is how, what about these Zoom backgrounds instead of?
Okay, let's. Yeah, let's take a look at a Zoom background. So let me see. Uh, here we go. Oh, oh, here, here I am, and here I am, shooting in Thailand. Um, I was working on a project for Universal. So the upside of backgrounds is, and again, it depends on your audience. Do you want to be distracting? Do you want to have your hair doing weird things? Me personally, I don't.
Don't your hand, your fingers kind of?
Yeah. So I find this distracting and quite frankly, I don't like it. Um, because it makes me think that there's something going on in that background that I should not be seeing. So all I wanna do is see what is going on in the background. So maybe that's just me. But I I do wanna see a little bit of what your environment is like. Um, if you have to cheat it, then fine, but um, they're just not very good. They they make everything look a little fake. Like there's it, there's odd, odd stuff going on in the background. This is one of my favorite comic books, yeah.
Or like the space scene, right, where you're, we are floating out in in the universe with the.
Everybody's using that space background right now and it's just like, what is going on in the room that you're sitting in? Did you not tidy up today, like, really? To me, that just means that you've got ten children, three dogs, and you, there's something going on. Uh, so at any rate, everyone's free to do their thing, but I I I think it's a, to me, it feels a little disingenuous.
Well, we've got another question from Puyen that just came in um, about positioning. And when you're giving a presentation, how close to be?
Well, I don't know, this seems a little close for a presentation, but.
I think, you know, I I heard some very good advice actually from a reporter today who is doing something like this. And and what they said was, think of yourself when you're doing your presentation. Are, where where would your position be when you're talking to somebody? And in all reality, you're probably several feet from them, right? But do you wanna do this kind of thing? I don't think so, cuz it's too far away. So really, whoops, sorry, when people banged my knee against my desk. Uh, really what people are looking at, when you give a presentation, they're they're taking in about this from the chest up kind of thing. Uh, this is about the right kind of framing, cuz this is what the human mind and the and the 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 eyes are seeing when someone's standing at the front of a room anyways. And given that everyone's commando anyhow, this is probably your safest bet. I'm just saying. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you so much. And do we have any other questions? Does anyone else have any other big issues that they wanna hit while we've got Karen on the line? This invaluable resource to help us all navigate this new Zoom world that we look, looks like we will be in for the time being, time to come.
I think for a long time, yeah.
Do you think it's when, sometimes when someone else is giving a presentation, the glasses, when they're reflecting. Is it rude to ask them to turn the, take their glasses off? Because it can be quite distracting and you can't see them, not yours.
No, no, I'm I'm just gonna show you something. I will, cuz I've got. So when I'm working on my computer. You mean like this?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Uh, you know, that's, it depends on what your relationship is to somebody, right? Um, I I I wear these glasses because they're non-reflective. So unless I'm looking right up to my Zoom, they're pretty good. But I mean, if if you've got a good relationship with someone, just tell them that you would love to see their beautiful eyes or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, some people like me, I can't see anything if I'm not wearing glasses, so it's that too. Hmm, I don't know, that might be one of those sidebar things where maybe you you give them a little bit of a uh, a call, I wouldn't send it over email or text. And just say, hey, um, we're probably gonna be doing a lot more of these things, I'd love to see your eyes. Would you consider either taking them off or getting a non-reflective lens? Cuz none of us can see your, really your eyes.
Yeah, because gosh, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, right? Yeah.
We also had a question come in, so in some cities like Hanoi, there is a lot of construction going on. And so sometimes, or I mean, I don't have construction going on here today. But my kids sometimes come in or I've got a dog who might be barking. So how, what is the best way to manage background noise? So definitely microphone helps, but what else can we do?
Well, I mean, apart from building a sound booth for yourself. I think that's a, I think that's a common issue that we're all kind of grappling with right now. And we afford each other the courtesy of forgiveness when that's going on. You know, we we've all got it, I've got two yappy dogs. Um, and they have their moment in the sun at different points during the day. So I I honestly don't have an answer to that. Cuz we're all suffering from it.
But then then you just address it, right? Just put that out into the meeting and say, listen, I'm really sorry, there's some construction going on or doing my best, but please bear with me if if a kid runs into the room, kind of a thing, is that's okay.
Well, this is, I I'm assuming that you're talking about when you actually are presenting. Because otherwise, when you're on a meeting, everybody really needs to have their microphones turned off, right? So the most immediate thing you can do if you're not speaking and presenting um, is turn your mic off, which you should be doing anyways. And otherwise, just turn off your video. And i- if there's actual, you know, interference, like a spouse with their shirt off in the background or something like that. You know, just being aware of your background in some way, but the noise thing, I don't have. I've got a house that's getting built right across the road from me here in Woodland Hills and it's. here in Woodland Hills, and it's a very quiet neighborhood. So I, I don't know what to do, except reposition yourself somewhere in the house temporarily. I don't know. Anybody else have any ideas about that? Because I'm stumped.
Well, and while we're all thinking about this, I'm also going to point out, I don't know if you guys are all watching the call on the gallery view. But did you notice that when Karen turned off her video, the first thing that happened was that her name and kind of little mini screen went all the way down to the bottom. And that is something really to keep in mind when we are attending meetings. Karen brought up this great point when I was talking to her the other day. Because if you want to be seen at a meeting and seen as participating in a meeting, then turning your video off bumps you all the way down to the bottom. And with these Zoom calls that sometimes can have, you know, 30, 40, 50, 100 or more participants, if it's critical that you are seen as participating, then having that video on is critical. And taking the time to talk and actually participate in those meetings also helps bump you up to the top. So literally, if you want to see and be seen, turn on your video to make sure that that is a part of, of how you are presenting.
Yep.
Any other questions right now? And I know we have run over quite significantly, but I feel like it was worth it. Yeah. Okay. Well then, if we don't have any other questions, Karen, any final last tips, words, bits of advice that we can take to continue moving forward with our new Zoom presence?
Oh my gosh, I'm so pleased to have met all of you and I hope we all stay interconnected. If you have any questions, please reach out to Laura. And by all means, connect up with me if you have anything else you want to ask. I'm so grateful for this time together and I'm so grateful that you guys are interested in, in doing this. I, I, I am a big feminist and I feel that when women stick together as, as we are good at, but sometimes don't do as well as we could. I am so grateful to be amongst a group of smart, funny, lovely women that are all, all of us striving in the world together. So thank you for that.
Thank you so, so much for your time today and for your great words of advice and wisdom. I think everybody is clapping and giving you rounds of applause and, and gratitude for, for all of the, the time. And really, I think, I think this was really fantastic to have real life examples too of how we can make quick, effective changes in our own home with stuff we already have, books, putting lamps on the floor, moving sheets around, you know, just taking the stuff that's already there, not making a big investment. But even the smallest little twenty dollar investment can make a really big difference in how you are seen and heard on these video platforms. Next event coming up is going to be on June the 16th Tokyo time with Reza V, who is a startup founder and entrepreneur who in the fall of 2019, attended 100 networking events in 100 days, right before COVID struck. And he is going to talk to us about how to recognize the value in our network and also how to identify the gaps in our network so that we can quickly bridge those gaps and make the most use of the people that we know. Not using people, but leveraging our social capital is the better way of saying it. So I hope we'll see you all on the 16th, if not before. Reach out with questions, of course, and have a great rest of the day. Thank you so much, everybody, for joining. Talk to you guys soon.